A governmental body, let's call this meeting to order. Thank you. A governmental body may conduct a meeting by electronic means only in circumstances where such a meeting in person is impossible or impractical and only if the governmental body provides public access to the conversation of the meeting to the extent reasonably possible. The place of the meeting is the place from which the communication originates and the minutes of the meeting shall include a statement explaining why a meeting in person was impossible, impractical, or as pursuant of Iowa Code, Section 21.8. The reason this meeting is being held by electronic means is due to out-of-town travel. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of a hearing for the 2016 new elementary site grading project. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on August the 11th, 2016. Board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to the next meeting. We will discuss this as a formal motion. And Dr. Petit, would you like to comment on that?
I would, yes. This public hearing is for the new elementary building grading that we talked about the last several meetings. We have been working with the city of Cedar Falls on an MOU, memorandum of understanding, excuse me, about cost sharing for the site improvements. And that would include the grading, that would include the road work, that would include the utilities and some other aspects. So that will come before the board in the future, but certainly wanted you to be aware of that per some of the other conversations that we've had. So again, we always try to work that once we have a public hearing, we wait until the next meeting to bring back that motion. That way, if there are public comments, the board has the time to really look into those, ask questions, and make a very strong and deliberate decision then at the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we will have this as an action item to hopefully move forward and approve the elementary grading package for the new elementary building.
Thank you. On the next, on the agenda is the consent agenda, and this includes the approval of the agenda, approval of the August 8, 2016 board meeting minutes, approval of the counts payable, the nonprofit organization membership, human resource report, open enrollment, agreements with CUCCC Transportation Services, and 28E agreement with CUCCC. Do I here emotionally accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Been moved, the second by Susan. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got one, this is Jeff Aston. I've got one question, just on the open enrollment report, just wanted to just ask a clarifying question about if, and Dr. Petit, we've adopted a new policy, is that correct? And is that, is that being applied to these open enrollment applications?
Yes. When we went through the policy enhancement, we talked about multiple reasons why the district may deny open enrollment requests. And one of those was for space and another reason is for programming needs. And you can see within the open enrollment packet, the Cs, and at one time, somebody had made the suggestion to put a C in what that means. That's a continuous enrollment. By Iowa Code, that cannot be denied for students that have been enrolled in our buildings or in a building from another district. They move out of that district, they can request and be granted to continuously enroll within that building that they attend. So when you see a C, that is an item that we do not have control over. There are a few that we are recommending approval, and those are, you can see, second and third on the, or third and fourth on the list. Both those students are high school students in which we would have room within our classes due to the fact that this is a late open enrollment request. They might not be able to be into all classes at the high school because some might be full, but they'd be able to have access to the courses and the classes that are full. You will see then, there are two other students that we are recommending to be allowed to be open enrolled in. They will be assigned a certain spot in a certain building within our district based on class sizes. Those are siblings, so they've had, they have siblings that already enroll into our district. Then you can see the last student we are recommending denial, it's an open enrollment in request. And again, that is for class size and for programming as well as some other aspects within the policy that we recommend that were denial.
Thank you for the certification, Dr. Petit.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question too. Adrian, how are we doing with hiring? We have everything, everybody hired for teaching staff?
Absolutely everybody, we have all of the teachers that we needed to have employed for the start of the school year.
Okay, good, thanks.
And I reviewed the bills, and I just thought, one thing that jumped out at me, even though we didn't have school the month of July, our utility bill was $60,000. So the bills go on and the bills get paid, but it's, it's a big, big budget we have. So it's been moved and seconded, do we accept the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's time for public comment?
Yes, and there's a statement that we always like to read as we come with public comment before the board. Once again, we are very excited to hold our meetings at the city council chambers. Some individuals may be new to viewing the Cedar Falls Community School District Board meetings, and I wanted to provide some information regarding our public comment section. Our school board meetings by Iowa Code are considered open meetings. An open meeting means that meeting is open to the public to observe and listen to the proceedings of the meeting. At the public comment section of the agenda, citizens have the opportunity to make brief statements to the board. To make a public comment, a citizen must simply notify the district office or board president by 4:00 PM the day of the board meeting, make sure that the comments are limited to three minutes or less, and keep the comments germane to school district business. At this time, we have not had anybody request public comment, but certainly would just want to continuously put that out in front of people or those citizens that may wish to come and make public comments before the school board.
Thank you. It's time for this secretary's financial report, Mr. Nefsker.
Thank you. We'll throw the financial reports up on the screen. You'll notice that the format maybe is slightly different for the board. We've changed that a little bit and hopefully it'll, it'll supply a little more clarity. You have all the detailed information in your packet as we've always sent that in the past, so this is just sort of an enhancement. We'll start with the general fund, and you'll notice in the general fund, we had revenues for the month of $1,576,844. The biggest chunk of that amount was we received our entire TLC allocation for the upcoming 2016-17 school year in advance. It's highly unusual that we would have this much money coming in the month of July. Normally, July is a pretty light month from the revenue side, but that's an exception, this is an exception. You can see the expenditures this month were $4,51,763, so an ending fund balance of $8,303,957.
Doug, this is Jeff, is it, so that's exceptional, and it means we shouldn't plan on this ever happening again, or?
Well, you shouldn't plan on seeing $1,576,000 coming in the month of July. That's pretty highly unusual. July is usually a very slow month on the revenue side.
And what happens, since this is our first year of the TLC grant, they, we received that dollar allocation, the $1.576 million in one lump sum payment prior to the start of the school year. Next year, though, that will be allocated per month through the funding formula on a per-student basis, so it'll be divided and rolled into the regular state aid per, that we receive per month on, across our district.
Okay, thanks.
Management fund, you'll see that we, receipts of $4,175 and expenses of $533,645. That is our property liability workers compensation premium payment for this school year. So an ending balance, fund balance of $416,548. One cent local option sales tax, receipts of $387,567 with expenditures of $417,228 for an ending fund balance of $9,461,997. And I would remind the board, and everybody can see it on the lower right, you can see the amount that is restricted by our two revenue bonds that the district has outstanding and the unrestricted values. Physical plant and equipment levy, revenue of the month for $11,680, and most of that was actually miscellaneous income, it was no property tax. Expenditures for the month, $49,462 for an ending fund balance of $3,353,259. Debt service, revenue for the month, that's interest on the amount from the previous month, and then the transfer of $251,881 from the statewide one-cent sales tax into the debt service fund as we start to build that fund balance up for the debt service payments. That'll be the first one in December and the second one in June of 2017. Student activity fund, a fairly quiet month with the receipts of $15,817 and expenditures of $49,284 for an ending fund balance of $604,397. Food service, again, a fairly quiet month with a revenue of $8,527 and expenditures of $28,633 for an ending fund balance of $642,136. There is the student coffee shop, and you'll notice no activity in the month of July as the students, of course, are gone for the summer. Trust and agency fund, this previously would have been rolled into the part of the general fund, we're breaking it out separately to show you activities that are going on with that. Reminder that these are dollars that come into the district that are not property tax dollars, one-cent sales tax dollars or anything else, they're donations and/or funds that we're holding for another agency or pass-through dollars when we receive reimbursements from different organizations such as PTAs or booster clubs for the day-to-day operations of the district. So the revenue for this for the month is $13,084, and you can see expenditures of $11,041. And then you can see the fund balance of a little over $253,000. And the last breakout, again, to show this separately, this is the River Hills Consortium. Just to remind the board that Cedar Falls is a fiscal agent for the River Hills Consortium, which consists of just approximately 30 school districts across northeast Iowa. They educate students at River Hills. What you're seeing here is a revenue of $555,445. Those would be final tuition payments for the 2015-16 school year that are coming in, and expenditures of $40,537,58. Next month, you'll see that $555,000 flow out as it's, as it basically is in and out. So the ending fund balance in that is $556,782, but normally, next month, you'll see that reduce substantially. And with that, I would entertain any questions that the board might have, including any comments on the new format.
Questions, comments?
Can everybody see that okay?
That was nice. That was well done, yep.
Hearing no questions, the financial reports will be placed on file for audit. Any communications?
No, and this is an opportunity on the agenda for board members and district staff to provide communications, not only to the full board, but certainly to provide comments regarding a question that may have arisen during public comment. I do have one communication I'd like to make. This morning at our all-school welcome, we wanted to thank the school foundation for a $3,000 check to enhance and continue on with our professional learning community work as a district, our collaborative teams, and really want to say thank you to our school foundation for that donation.
And those gifts came from donors and alumni and staff, and so that was, we were very supported by the community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I just have a quick communication. We also talked, the Booster Club had a little spill at this morning's meeting, and anyone who's watching or has friends or family, we are always looking for Booster Club memberships. Anybody can be a member of the Booster Club. And I did see, Dan, that I think you had retweeted something about if you're a certain age, you can have a free activity pass. So if you could speak to that a little bit, I think that'd be great, because I don't, I'm sure there's a lot of people in our community who don't realize they have access to that.
Sure. Our, our school district offers free activity passes for all citizens of Cedar Falls that live within our school district to all of our activities throughout the school year. So all they need to do is contact the high school, show proof, whether that's a driver's license or some ID that would indicate that they have reached age 62 or above, and they will receive a free activity pass to all activities at the high school.
I think that's a great thing that we offer. I actually, I think it was a year or two ago, we had someone call me and ask why we don't do that, and I think I contacted either you or Gary, and you said, "We do do that." And I just wasn't aware of that, so.
Yeah. Prior to this year, these passes were distributed through the Cedar Falls Rec Department, and so I think over the years, we've had a number of citizens that were not aware of the ability to go get those, and we really didn't promote it. This year, we're making a concerted effort, we brought that in-house now, and, and so all of our passes will be distributed through the high school, and, or they can also stop at the central office and pick them up as well. But we think it's a good service to all of our senior citizens and a thank you to them for all their support for our activities.
Great way to boost community interest in our programming, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I'd like to say that you did an outstanding job this morning. I had afterwards lots and lots of positive comments, so thank you. Thank you for the way you lead that.
Oh, well, thank you. It's easy to talk about the great things that are going on and the tremendous people we have across our, our district and community.
Well, you're so humble, and I really appreciate the kind words that you give. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Dr. Petit, would you lead us into facilities discussion?
Yes, just a couple items. Number one, we know that we are going to have to have deeper discussions and look at our physical plant and equipment levy and the renewal of that physical plant and equipment levy. That levy, which has been in place for the last eight years, is a 10-year levy, so it was voted on by our community and by our public back in 2008. That, again, is up in 2018. As we look at how we utilize that physical plant and equipment levy in the past, but not only into the future, we are creating a 10-year, very specific master plan for facilities. And that's going to look at technology use and technology expenditures, our bus and transportation fleet and the ongoing expenses with maintaining that fleet and adding buses and bus routes, preventative maintenance, all of the roof repair, some of what's going to be the flooring and carpet repair, it's tuck pointing across all of our buildings across our district, and then different facility upgrades that we know we need to be able to have as we look to the future as not only a growing district, but as a district that certainly wants to continuously be cutting edge, look at the technologies that are out there, and enhance the learning opportunities for our students to a high level. So what we are doing right now is working through all of those projects, all those different costs over a 10-year period, and we're breaking those down and weighting those kind of within three categories. Number one, what is the educational benefit? Is there a benefit that's going to enhance opportunities for students? Number two, is there going to be a safety enhancement and a safety benefit that's going to ensure greater safety across our district or our buildings? And number three, efficiency, because we always want to be as efficient as possible as, as a district to ensure the dollars that we receive go directly into the classroom to impact student learning. So we're, we will bring that back to the board here in the future, but we're, we want to make sure that people understand that that PEPAL renewal, it's not a tax increase, it's a renewal of an existing levy that has huge impact across our district for ongoing needs, especially as I talked about, bus maintenance, technology, preventative maintenance is going to be important as we look into the future. One of the potential dates, because we are locked by Iowa Code to only have four dates available to school districts in which we can have elections, one of the elections or dates that are coming up here in the near future would be December 6, 2016, and that would allow us then to renew that PEPAL from 2018 to 2028. So that is something we're looking at in the future as we talk facilities. We think that that's an important conversation component, but one that will continuously have deeper dialogue around our community on the next couple of weeks.
Is that a 50% thing or a 60% thing?
That is a simple majority, 50%.
And it's just a renewal, right? Not, not an increase, it would be just a renewal?
Just a renewal, yes. It is not an increase in any tax levy rates.
And Andy, can you or Doug remind us, even though we're in, we're in year eight of the most recent renewal, how many years total have we had this levy? Because I know we renewed it, but it would have been in a previous 10-year period, I'm assuming, and then, I don't know if there was even a 10-year period before that.
The district did, has had the voted PEPAL levy for, for quite a long period of time. I can't tell you exactly when, when it was initially put in place, but it's, it's been with us at least the last three 10-year cycles, but I can confirm that for you.
Just another reminder for the community that it's, it's a long-term public support that has been in place for our schools and very well-used and.
Very well-used, historically very well-used, and we know into the future it'll be impactful for our students and their learning.
Thank you.
The only other item that I have with facilities is, as we continuously look at the timelines for our facility plans with our elementary work, the hope is to have the grading package approved here in the near future, potentially at the next board meeting. Then we will look at starting to finalize all of the packages for the design and development, not only of the new elementary, but North Cedar and Orchard Hill. Those hopefully will be able to then be bid, released come this spring with construction work beginning on all three of those projects, not only later this spring, but earlier in the summer. We're extremely excited about that. We know it's very much needed and certainly going to really be a positive benefit not only to our, our community as a whole, but certainly to our district.
One more quick question. So we have two additional, two portables at South Illinois. I see the one in the front, and where is the location of the other?
There isn't, there's only one.
There's only one?
One portable, double classrooms. So there's two classrooms in the one portable, so it's always called a double. So it's, actually comes together and then they, they put them together.
So that's why it's two pieces?
Yes, it was in two pieces.
Mm-hmm.
And we had our registration for our biggest kindergarten class.
In a long time.
In a long time.
Yes, I think right now, we're approaching 450 students in kindergarten, and I know we registered more students today, I'm not sure exactly the number, but we are continuously growing that, that number on a daily basis.
Wow. For comparison, what was last year's graduating class, approximately?
About 370.
Wow.
Yes. So, very exciting, and, and with that, just continuously shows the, the growth that we have across the district. It ebbs and flows this time of year, we have some students that move in, some students that move out, so we know Thursday's going to be an important date with the number of students that are sitting in seats with the first day of, of enrollment and, and the first day that we have school. So it's going to be exciting. We know it's going to be a great year, and with that, the enrollment growth is going to be interesting to see exactly where we're at.
Well, in the U and I community, Thursday is known as the day our children stop making fun of us.
Okay.
They've been really smug.
It's a break-in period, so.
Is there a transition plan for the two elementaries that will be under construction with kids? And I mean, how will that be?
Yes, we, we know that that's going to be an ongoing process. We know that that's going to be a disruption, just anytime you have construction, remodeling, some potential tear-down of those, those buildings. There is a plan in place, we're continuously working on that with our design teams to try to make that as seamless and have as much fluidity as possible. Student safety, utmost concern, number one, and second is to continuously streamline the learning process so there's not interruptions, that the, we keep the noise to the minimum and ensure that, that students are in the right locations for the, the right courses and classes. So yes, there, there's that plan that's being designed. We know it's going to be a good plan in place, but we also know that during the construction phases, people, it's not going to be the same as when you didn't have construction going on, that's just a fact of life, but most people understand that the, the long-term gain is certainly worth that short-time, short-term pain and inconveniences.
And building staffs involved with that, I take it?
Certainly, yes, exactly.
Andy, will there be a need to relook at, and I know there were steps in the past, but relook at boundaries again, or are we confident that the way we set it a few years ago is, is going to be adequate for what we have today?
Yep, great question. I think it was a few weeks ago, or maybe sometime during one of the summer board meetings, we had that discussion briefly. What we've done is tried to firm up some timelines, working with the demographer, RSP. They, for number one, we want to make sure that our enrollment growth and the subdivision growth matches the, the work that they did two years ago. So they will be coming in to, to double-check those numbers to make sure that we are not either putting a burden onto an enrollment, an elementary enrollment building prematurely and making sure that those numbers are accurate. And then number two, with that, will be coupled with the, the boundary lines to make sure that those are appropriate and certainly meet the definitions of what that committee worked on two years ago.
And will we have to do boundaries before the new schools? I mean.
And we have time, yes. As we look to the opening of a new elementary as 2018, the hope would be by December, we'll have some pretty good information back, just to understand exactly what the enrollment looks like and whether or not any of those growth projections have changed. So the hope is, by December, we'll have some pretty firm answers.
So we won't have to probably change boundaries until the new school's built, correct?
That is when the new boundaries would be enacted.
Okay, we won't be doing it before that, okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
Communications? We'll continue right on with the superintendent's report, additional.
Yes. A lot of times, we only have one August meeting, and I think a lot of people do know that, so we have had, this is our second August meeting, so there is not a lot on the agenda. For that, I apologize, but we knew we needed to have this meeting for the public hearing as we continue to look at the timelines to do the work at the new elementary site. There are a couple other things I'd like to comment on, and really, I thought the first one was the article that was in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on August 15, 2016. I thought it was a tremendous article. The focus was not necessarily on the Cedar Falls community or the Cedar Falls district, but they really did a good job comparing some of the largest school, or largest cities in their tax rates with cities of at least 20,000 residents for the fiscal year 1617. And you can see that Cedar Falls is the lowest, second lowest, excuse me, of the total rate amongst all those cities, but I think what's important to be able to point out, especially for the, the school board and, and our community, is that our school district tax rate is the lowest of all those school districts across the state that are, are large in size. And I think that's very impressive and very important to point out. Not only is our, our city very prudent with their, their levy rate, but I think the school district is, the county is, and the other entities and other levies is very prudent and, and cost-effective. So I think that was just important, I want to point that out to make sure that people saw that and, and paid attention, as that was, I thought, a very well-written article in the Courier.
Andy, yeah, absolutely. We looked great on this last time, and thank you for everyone's effort on that. Does this include the, the recent bond? Does this, does this incorporate the passage of the, of the recent bond in these numbers, or is that, is that coming in the 1718 year?
Yep, that'll come in the 1718 school year, and again, it depends on with our bond council and how they look at bidding out that bond, but right now, this number is not reflective in that. And that's one of those aspects as you look across the other districts, and I can't speak for cities, but the other districts that have passed bonds don't reflect that as well. So those will ebb and flow, but certainly, I think it's important just to, to note that prudent and fiduciary responsibility is extremely important as we look across our city. That's a great question.
Yep, thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Couple other comments that I have up on the slides, you can see here, just a couple components that we talked about at the all-school welcome this morning. So I know the board members have already seen this, but certainly, we just wanted to highlight some of the really good things that are going on across our school district. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the population growth. We have many, many families that are looking for excellence for their children educationally, and we have an influx of, of families that are moving to our area, certainly to Cedar Falls. We're certainly focused on that excellence. We want all kids, every single day, to be able to have the, the excellence in education that they deserve and certainly that all of our parents demand and our, our staff demand. And you'll also see that we, we are really proud that we're continuing forward with those facilities to match our high levels of expectations. You can see on the, the right-hand side of the screen, some of the things that are occurring right now for this upcoming school year, our facility projects that are occurring. We have three that will be ongoing throughout the year. Our teacher leadership and compensation with multiple leadership roles of, of teachers across our district with instructional coaches, a STEM facilitator, professional development leaders, individuals that are going to be building-level leaders and mentor teachers. We're very excited about the impact. We're very excited about the impact that will have. We know that the workshop model, reading and writing workshop model will be embedded across all of our elementary classrooms in each of our buildings and that's going to be very impactful for our students as we look to the future. We know that we are going to have CAPS program, Center for Advanced Professional Studies at 11th and 12th grade with three programs rolling out second semester. We're also updating our Power School and transitioning with our student management system as well as a brand-new district website. You can also see then just a few things that we think that leads into, some of those changes that we look at as a district then lead into, how does it impact students? And you can see here, our achievement is increasing. Our ACT composite right now is the highest it has been in the history of Cedar Falls as far back as we can track, at 24.5 composite score. We know that our graduation rate's one of the highest in the state, especially when you look at larger school districts across the state and really our staff. It goes down to that third bolt on the left-hand side. The collaborative focus, our professional learning communities, the fact that we are one of 22 districts across the nation that are a model professional learning community district by the institute that really focuses on those collaborative teams, I think is indicative of the high quality of staff we have across our district. And again, we know that enrollment's growing. We know our students are talking about the high levels of engagement that they have and that's embedded with some of the technology work, but also some of the personalized learning that we're focused on as we continue to dig deeper into every single student every single day at high levels. And the last piece that I had, I just, and this, there's a handout at your spot. We just received this and there's some for audience members that Janelle have. I didn't put this up for the sake that it had me in the picture by any means. The most important people in the picture are in the middle and certainly on the left-hand side. But on Friday late afternoon, we received a visit from the governor's STEM council and the director of the governor's STEM council, who you can see pictured there, is Dr. Jeff Weld. And he presented to the Cedar Falls Community School District a STEM MVP award and highlighted some of the work that's been going on within Cedar Falls. We don't always do a great job of necessarily recognizing all the work that occurs, but within that handout, you can see just some of the brief items that the governor's STEM advisory wanted to recognize us for. Number one, you can see STEM teacher externship program. We have two high school science teachers, Megan Reynolds and Jason Lang, who both help with that program administration of that nationally recognized internship program where high school teachers, middle school teachers go out into businesses during the summer and work hand-in-hand with those businesses and those two staff members coordinate that across the state. You can see some of the high school teachers and staff members that we've had involved with those externships listed there. Most recently, Chad Anderson with the Greater Manufacturing and Machining, or Greater Machining and Manufacturing, and he's from the Cedar Falls High School in our auto technology. Scale-up program. You can see the number of scale-up programs with a STEM focus that we've had over the course of the last several years. This year, we're starting with Making STEM Connections. You can see Engineering is Elementary as well as A World in Motion. Before that, several Project Lead the Way courses and opportunities for students across the district. Very proud, and that's listed and bolded underneath item number two, you can see that our First Robotics Challenge, FRC, who is led by Kitten Swartley, he is now helping 13 schools across the state of Iowa start their FRC teams. And he is certainly a leader in that, not only across the state, but across the country. They just, my fault, came back from China. In fact, they just came back on Tuesday of this past week from 13 days in China. Not only him, but several students and advisors were in China to help Chinese teams be able to be more embedded with the First Robotics. Down at the bottom, you can see the STEM festival, which we're very excited about and we continue to be involved with. On the backside, we had a teacher that was an Iowa STEM Teacher of the Year Award, our Hour of Code and the coding work that we do at some of our elementaries and the fact that those schools have been engaged as an Iowa code partner across the state of Iowa. Then also sold the Math Thematics Transition Guide, which one of our high school teachers, Rich Strike, Mr. Strike, was highly involved with and was an integral part of that guide's development. So there's a lot of STEM work that's occurring across our district we're really proud of and certainly the STEM council wanted to come in and present that award. And as of now, we know that we are one of one that have been awarded the STEM MVP from that governor's STEM council across the state. We think that there'll be more as they continue to look at districts across the state, but it really goes back to our staff, the wonderful support that they provide for students and the work that they're doing in coordination with businesses across the Cedar Valley. And with that, that was, oh, I had a couple other reports. Number one, start of school year. Again, the welcome back today was tremendous. We wanted to just thank all the board members for being there and our wonderful staff. Thank you to Scratch Cupcakes for donating cupcakes as well. That was just tremendous and that's always appreciative of our staff as they come back for that opening welcome. And finally, school starts Thursday, August 25. It's time to get students back into the buildings and we're excited to start the year. We know it's going to be just a tremendous year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For those comments, this is the STEM update and congratulations to our school district.
Very much. It's a district-wide award.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, do I hear a motion? We adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.